Okay, thanks.
The owner's lawyers ask that we hold this over to May the tenth. I don't have a problem with that. However, I do have a question for the, um, this is for NHTC or ARB, the head league. I don't know who that is anymore. If they're wearing.
Partnership.
You can, you can ask, I could get it to them. You can ask what it is.
The question is, is that more or less simple, the ARB and building, for the ARB in historic communities, non-contributing buildings were never made to use the same materials that were in those neighborhoods? Or like now replica and look-alike were accepted? But the ARB's ability to determine what that material was, was, was never their responsibility. So I need to ask the director, uh, and I'm trying to read the staff report, but I'm pretty sure if I read the staff report, then the staff is going to say they probably are okay with, you know, what I did. But I need to ask the director to make sure. But in, in, from my experience in building directly for back then, it was an NHTC that in historic neighborhoods where it was non-contributing, and I'm pretty sure that building is non-contributing, that the use of materials identical to what was there was not necessarily the wrong thing. So I need to know those answers.
Okay. And they've talked to me about that recently, so I'll make sure they get the information to you.
So do you have an answer?
No, but I just tell you that they brought it up as a topic of discussion. They know it's a concern and they're looking at that to make sure that we're moving forward with the times because there are materials, building materials today that are made better and to, for specifically that purpose that weren't available even ten years ago, some fifteen. So I think they're relooking that to be more flexible in terms of how that happens.
Well, it's still case and windows are issues. They make steel casings windows today. The same company that when I looked at this building and makes the window, also makes steel casings window. But is the owner, owner, does the owner have to specifically say, okay, we're doing this, so the ARB said that we have to do it? When the building's not.
Yeah, I'll make sure they get an answer to you on it.
Mr. President.
A request will wait for noise, ordinance on May twenty eighth to seventh until eleven p.m. in Springfield Avenue. Orange Jim is fourth from eight a.m. until four p.m. Returning stage card. Eight to thirty. And fifty p.m. South Potter Street. Base seven, two p.m. to eight p.m. River side park. Eight fourteen, ten a.m. to four p.m. River side. Eight, two eighteen, seven a.m. to ten p.m. River side park. Eight fourteen, eight a.m. to ten p.m. Um, the decision on the fourth. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Uh, Reverend Byron Brown, Tim Smith, Reverend Jim Flowers, Ben Harris, regarding redistricting. Want Phil Cunningham, uh, providing information about the state's authorities. Fred Walk, um, just D. Highsmith, um, wants to introduce her mentions to the city. Terry Mitchell, uh, concerns about animal services department. Uh, including Edwards wants to introduce her organization to the council. Uh, to City York, Paul Carter, uh, providing information regarding her organization for all new to land, to be selling progress. A lot of projects wants to disarm organization for their life. Reggie Hill was providing an overview of success for the future. Project one hundred initiative, entry back point challenge. Alicia Smith, uh, should not provide information about national airport. Orders to tell numbers, six zero one five. To add, orders to add article eleven, four types of sport track. Always city code and titles.
Mr. President. I've got a amendment here in hand to offer up today, which allows for all roads thirty-five miles per hour or less that are two lanes to be included as being allowed mode with the exception of Alzville Road and Azalea Road. Talk about if you have a clerk.
Question.
Yeah, Mr. President. I was talking to Ben earlier because he's got some exceptions. And then we have a list of all the streets that he too can make some exceptions on. And so they're ordering me to get those to Chris so that it can be included.
I mean, pretty much you and Ben are pretty much the ones that have top voices around here. So we've also got the neighborhoods, uh, the Sky and Carol.
Uh, I've got to relook streets, but thirty-five is just, when we say thirty-five, it's fifty in the city. And you put a golf cart on the street, or cars, you know, if they was lost now, we got problems. So if my district is mostly neighborhoods, uh, there are a couple of roads that they get out on two, three, and four, thirty mile, such as Salford or, um, Salley Road down south, uh, they're going to have problems. And, uh, so I need to relook this and I may put a amendment for District Six that this neighborhood is on, and that just takes off. And I have a question forty-five miles down on District Six.
Mr. President. Score. You want to turn on break?
I have another question. Um, this is for Director Batiste. With these exceptions or what Mr. Jones was talking about, just, just District Six being taken out of the mix completely within thirty-five miles per hour, how difficult does that make that for enforcement? And not just enforcement, but for citizenry as well? Because he only didn't know where they are eight and she thought it was not going to.
I, I think it's going to be a matter of educating the public which areas the thirty-five miles per hour is not applied to. And then, of course, it's going to require that the officers understand where those areas are as well when it comes to enforcement measures. So again, I can't just tell you that it's going to be a really easy process to enforce this measure until once the ordinance is passed. And of course, once passed, then we move into the enforcement piece of it. So I, I, I don't have an easy answer for that, for that question.
Mr. President, a question. So how much is USA versus District Six? I can't remember.
It's on, it's on the board.
Yeah, and the campus is in large, except for some of the.
Student housing a lot of it is in my area, the south side of campus. Uh, but that part of the road is four lane.
Yeah, that's four lane. So that was one of the things on this, um, some of these roads that aren't thirty-five, example of all of ours currently thirty miles per hour, but it will soon be four lane. So there are some roads that aren't four lane that obviously would not fall under this. Or those vehicles should not be there. But again, if you got any exceptions to changes to streets that aren't thirty-five miles per hour to lane, should you not want to be included to allow those big vehicles? We need to get them across.
Sorry. Yeah, we just, we need a name, three day. Sorry, all of them, all of them, they, they cover. Anything else, anyone else? My turn.
Zero one zero two five. Orders to provide a proportionate floor in seven state county districts. They will be a last week, one, thirty-four, twenty-two. And also, one, thirty-six, orders to provide a proportionate to the council of seven state county districts. And, um, to.
Carol.
Suggests we can say with this order, so then the, uh, there are orders to hold it to the same day. Like you said last week, it'd be a, um.
I've got a question on that, Willie. I know you have scheduled a May. Yeah, Chris, it's something relevant to June. Do you still want to do that? I'm sorry. Do you still want to do that on May third, or did you want to hold it over for longer? You said we're having the administrative services.
Well, the whole point of it is that it starts with the, uh, the ordinance. It's the same, do you not want to handle both for the same day?
So who's asking, because we're talking about like that, or the, the maps and all that? And then we also know that annexation is on the table probably coming in, and the proposal will probably come in a couple of weeks. So that's sort of in perspective next.
Really? And so I'm asking an administrative question.
We're working on it.
So can you expect an annexation map in a couple of days?
We're working on it. It's going to take probably a little bit longer. We, we're working on, um, several aspects, revenue, expenses. And so there's a lot of data that we don't really have yet that we're working on.
So are we looking longer than a few weeks or?
I mean, I would say within a month, we'll be ready to have conversations.
So sometime in May?
That's correct.
So it would be before we vote on this in June?
That's correct. So the question was posed to us, what would, um, redistricting look like post-annexation? If we annex, and it's all hypothetical, right? So, so we're, um, we're looking at that on what that would do to the redistricting.
Right. Well, the, the problem that I see though is if one has to be in before everyone starts because any type of annexation during redistricting is speculative because you don't know who's going to vote to come into the town. So you can't do them both the same time. So you have to do one before the other. So let this.
Mr. President.
So I was just hoping that we can conclude one before the other. Or if we do conclude one before the other, it would be nice to see them both about the same.
It's our intent is to give you these, uh, projections on annexation next month ahead of the vote on the redistricting. And we will handle that the same way as we did the redistricting as far as individual meetings and the stakeholder meetings.
You want me to care?
Thinking about dates. Let's just push the camp down a little bit. It's one of the dates, so I'm pretty sure we can coordinate all we have to. But it would be, um, if we're going to do this, it would be worthwhile to have an idea of what we're looking like and also some type of input so that we kind of know where we're going with it. But as you said, if you don't have all of your, your potential places in line yet, is what you tell me it sounds like.
That's correct. There's, there's still a lot of data as far, that you're, all of y'all are going to want to know, right? As far as revenue, as far as capital outlay, and then recurring expenses. And again, all of this is a hypothetical in what would happen with annexation.
Um, Carol, yeah, I, I'm, I'd ask a little question. So.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no reason all these can't be done, and it should be done concurrently. We can know exactly what the mayor's map or some maps going to look like and vote on that at the same time we have to vote on annexation when we see that map. And they go together. And, and the agreement will be that they go together. Because even though it's, it's not voted on on annexation, you can have whatever map that will be official pending an annexation vote, we can bring on at the same time. But we're not voting on annexation, but we do need to know what those lines look like once annexation could happen. And I think now is the time to discuss that with everything on the table and in front of this body, and we move forward in a very legitimate, deliberate way to meet the needs of this city at large.
My turn.
Yeah, because I've questioned a little more on the timing. You know, when a proposal will come to us, knowing that the mayor's proposal has been laid over until June, and we've got these two maps that something needs to be done with. They could be laid over till June, voted on today, however, you know, you'll handle it. But the timing issue, um, because I think all along I thought that we had to do our redistricting first before annexation. But I know if we can get the proposal, the order of council, and we agree to allow a vote, then the date has to be set for that vote, correct? When, when would that have to happen?
So. So we'll, we'll need to get y'all some, I guess, some legal briefs on, on how this actually happens. So the city council's actually not annexing anything. You're just a, a vote in the area proposed for annexation. And so the timeline on that, if we propose something next month, and Chris, you may have to look into this. I think once the city council acts, then the, the mayor proposes that to the probate judge within ten days of the city council action, the judge has to call for that vote no more than forty days out. So it could very well be that either you'll vote up, vote down the ordinances, either way it becomes effective in August. And so it may actually be effective before the vote is actually taken in the annexation area.
So the redistricting maps could become effective before there's actually a vote on annexation?
That's correct. But once a large population comes in, the redistricting effort begins again. And that's why the, the ask of the administration was, what would it look like if this annexation, if they were to vote into the city, the redistricting in a post-annexation era?
Um, I'm, 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 Mr. Karen.
So the likelihood is there could be some overlap with the annexation vote going forward, but we would have to, we wouldn't be the honest deadline of the annexation vote?
That's probably more likely than not.
All right. So that question need answered still yet. When you say what would annexation look like, that is just a hypothetical statement. Because no one in particular group is guaranteed that they will vote to come into the city of Mobile. Therefore, if you, anything that you put on the map is pure, is purely speculation until that group says by eating out of this vote that yes, we're coming in. So you're re-apportionate according to annexation if it was a map that is speculative or false until the point that anybody's come in.
So it's not by unanimous vote, but simple majority vote of the proposed areas. And so there would be voting blocks within that annexation area that would, um, either vote in or vote out. So we're looking at, you know, a hypothetical, if they all voted in, what would happen? None of us, again, all we're calling for is the vote. Until that vote occurs, uh, we really don't know what would happen. But I think the question was posed to us, the hypothetical is if this entire area came in, what would it look like for the city of Mobile? And so that's what we're going to bring to you, is what that looks like. Uh, I think it's up to the city, this is a, to figure out which neighborhoods actually do want in.
So it's not a guarantee.
A vote is never a guarantee.
Well, what I'm saying is that, toward the question, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be clear. It, again, I've been through annexation twice. Jada, you've been through it twice with me, or three times we've been through this. And I'm simply saying, and I'm not hearing, I don't think I'm hearing this in a manner that we've done it before, is that not everyone will vote to come in. So how can we produce a map, you know, showing what it would look like if these people come in when we don't know? I heard you say speculation, but your, your statement sounds as if though what it would look like after annexation. You don't know what it's going to look like after annexation.
Again, the hypothetical is the proposed area, if it were to vote in, what would it look like? Now, all we're really calling for is the vote of that annexation area. That's all we're calling for. Now, if neighborhoods vote in or vote out, and you can remember when we did the airport boulevard corridor, some neighborhoods voted not to come in, some voted to come in. And that's been usually the case. But we really don't know until after the annexation vote. All we're going to propose to the council is the neighborhoods that we would call for a vote.
When you do bring a proposed annexation plan, let's be mindful that the approach should be proportionate also.
Mr. President.
Um, you know, Mr. Karen?
Yeah.
It was right to continue with terms.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that Willie was talking about is how we've done annexations in the past, and it has been a while. So I can't remember exactly, although I can remember different neighborhoods obviously voted, and retail was called into certain neighborhoods. So what you bring us will really just be, these are the neighborhoods that we are targeting for annexation. We don't know who's coming in, we don't know what the outcome will be. So we really can't have a map that said this will be your new redistricting map. All we're doing is, well, the neighborhoods are being allowed a vote at that point, correct?
That's correct. But I, I do think there should be some effort made to find out the desire of certain neighborhoods to come into the city. Um, so we have plotted historically the letters that we got of people that were asking for an annexation vote. And so we know where those neighborhoods are. But I think we should find out a little more information from the other neighborhoods that are interested in voting in annexation.
Well, you know, I would agree with that because otherwise it kind of takes them off guard. And we're like, huh, what do you mean we're having a vote coming in for annexation? But if there's a way to speed it up a little bit so that a vote can be taken prior to August, and I think that would certainly be better. But I understand that it just may not be possible.
Oh, well, Mr. Karen, I'm very, Mr. Reynolds, uh, is a candidate, he's a parent.
My thought on all this is that we have the administration provide us the, the lines of the city that we'd like to see come in, the new areas. And then throughout this redistricting discussion, it has become very clear, abundantly clear that a minority majority in four districts is very desirable not amongst just the council, but, you know, our citizens at large. And I think it would be disingenuous to try to, you know, not give us some sort of idea, although it's not certain, you're right, Mr. Carroll, it's not certain. But it would, I think it would behoove us all to be able to see sort of what it's going to look like in the event that everybody does vote to come into the city so that we can still maintain that, you know, the desires and wishes of the council and a lot of our citizens, so that, when we get it done, because annexation is such an important part of our city and something that we really have to do to grow, uh, for now. So it was my request, you know, that we, we have, try to look at those lines so that we can all be, you know, do it all with sound line to know exactly what we're doing. Um, and not, not bring everybody in and then try to figure it out. But we, we get a kind of an idea. We have a, you know, an agreement amongst ourselves. And I think it all can be done at one, one time.
Mr. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my view on it is that, you know, redistricting should be done first. Um, I look at that, um, I, I agree. I think we should see the proposed map of, you know, with annexation and see how it will look. But I, I believe that redistricting should be done first. It's good to look at the numbers. You know, I agree with, um, Councilman, um, Reynolds that we need to see the numbers, you know, got to get an idea. Then we should go, I think Chief Barbers, you know, spoke about even taking it and going it out into the communities. And so I believe that, that, that takes time, just like we're taking time with this redistricting. This, um, shouldn't be rushed, but I should, I do believe that we should, um, start and complete, um, redistricting. And then at the same time, we still could be looking at the proposal of maps or how it would look, but we need to complete this first, I believe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Carol.
I was, I was trying to add something to my head. What's the drop dead day on the vote for redistricting? Is it August or?
It was August the twelfth, I believe.
I, I.
Go ahead, I, what did you say?
I was just going to, just go ahead.
No, I don't.
Okay, yeah, so my thought on, um, we're, we're going to have to redraw the lines at some, at some point. You know? I guess we don't have to legally. We're only legally required to do it every ten years or so. We don't have to, but we don't want a locked side of district, seventy, six, where you got, you know, sixty thousand people over there, whatever we, we do with annexation. But, um, having the, the vote for whatever redistricting map we want to see, whatever it is, and the vote to allow, that's all we're doing is voting to allow people to vote. We can have that vote, those two votes at the same time. We can definitely do that.
Not conjoined at the same day?
Sure you can.
We can do it either way.
Sure you can.
Not conjoined.
Let, let Mr. Reynolds finish.
Yeah, so those, we, we can have those votes, you know, as they get closer at the same time, exact same time, to allow for not only a, a redistricting map to be adopted, but also a vote to be allowed for annexation at the same exact time. That's true. That's absolutely possible.
Two separate organizations or two separate.
Well, maybe it'd be two separate items on the general take it up at the same time? If, if that's what we choose to do?
But separate in statute? Meaning that we're not trying to tie an annexation map to a.
If that's what we want to do, we have the ability to adopt a, we have the ability to adopt a redistricting map right now.
Right.
All right? And we also have the ability at the same exact time to allow for a vote for annexation at the same exact time. Now, now, with the understanding that, uh, based on the lines that's been provided to us, that we're going to have something that looks similar to what's been provided to us, that we'll have to take up at some point those won't lock side of districts. So, but to allow the people to vote so that then we know who, who has opted to come into the city, we can allow that vote at the same time. That's my thought on it. So, so that we're not necessarily addressing all the additional redistricting lines at the same time. We have got more of a guide put forward to us. This is what it's going to look like. And that goes both the same time. And then we have discussion as Mr. Pen is outlined. And we have the discussion about what those lines will be after annexation's done. Because that's not something.
But we already have a redistricting plan in place.
If, if, if that's what we choose, we vote at the same time.
So you were saying, again, a redistricting plan passed with a vote for a possible annexation pass?
That's right.
But we do them on the same day?
Same time.
Same time. I'm okay with that.
Let's move, let's get it.
Mr. President. Every annexation vote is always going to have the technical vote on what the annexation would look like. Nothing's ever guaranteed. Everybody just able to notice that because they understand the dynamics of people's votes are never guaranteed. With that said, we do know that for the past three years, there's entities in the county that have been trying to become a part of the city. So that work has never stopped, and those discussions have never stopped. There may be some new areas that are brought in by the administration that we will reach out to collectively with the city and have that discussion to see who wants to come in. But again, this vote that we are taking is only allowing the vote before them to vote, period. And I fully believe that we can come to an agreement on a redistricting map. That is voted on at the same time that we vote for annexation. And let's be very clear, drawing redistricting lines is not going to help the economic state of this city. It will do nothing to increase the economic state of this city. Annexation will. We know for a fact that we've lost tens of millions, if not over a hundred million dollars in the last two years because we did not annex the last time. in the last two years because we did not annex the last time. That goes directly to alleviating a lot of the poverty that we see in the city would go directly to that. And for us not to take this up and address this at the same time is not doing right by the city.
Mr. President.
Carroll.
I'd be realistic, I didn't say this. We are all aware that the city, and the census is proved, and the city has tracked this, and we all know this. We are losing and continue to lose on an average twenty-eight hundred people a year. Until we stop the bleeding out here, how many people we annex, we're gonna be right back in the spot in a short period of time. It doesn't matter if we annex twenty-five thousand people or thirty thousand people. Twenty-eight hundred people times four puts us right back in the spot of less than two hundred thousand people in the next election cycle. So what are we gonna do then? Annex again? We cannot annex our way to financial and fiscal prosperity. We also have to stop the bleeding.
Mr. President. I don't understand how not having a hundred million extra dollars would go directly towards helping stop the bleeding from the city and putting in those types of programs that can assist individuals. Part of that, there's two things driving the depletion of citizens in the city, crime in schools. And I hear it every day, via email, via phone call, watch the news, et cetera. Those are the two things driving the problems in the city. Arc of funds, how many dollars have we put towards safety via Arc of Dollar to this point?
Five point two billion.
Five point two million dollars.
How long has that been because we didn't annex before?
That's what I'm saying.
It's not speculation, it's fact, and I, I'll have the facts at the table when we bring this. I will have the facts at the table when we bring this, and we'll discuss that at that point.
There's no city in the city-state that also bed, differ the same question that they're not.
And the demographics are extremely different than what it is in this city, and also funds are driven by demographics. And I think I had it before.
Yes, but as Mr. Jones, we're gonna move on because annexation is not in front of us today. The ordinance is in front of us, Mr. Carroll, just come up with a date, got to Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, go ahead and conclude, please.
At the end of the day, again, we can get to what the right solution is if we all work towards that, a common approach without predetermined agendas when we come to this table. Right now, the mayor's map is for minority majority districts as it sits. All four voting age population majorities. That cannot change in annexation. It's illegal for that to go away. And everybody is cognizant of that on the legal side and then on the political side of that. So we fully understand the dynamics, but let's move in a positive direction without all the bickering and, and politics and the thing we move this city for. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. President.
Carroll, okay, you wanna hold your...
You talking about insurance services?
Yeah. I mean, you know, these are first before, it's a very hard door.
Uh, put them on the same date that we're voting on the, that was June 17th was the date that was like, oh, that was Friday when I checked. So it'd be the following Tuesday, on the first. Just whatever it is, it's, it's, alright.
Consent for this location's held over forty-two, seven-nine, decline the structure as well as sixty-two family avenue, public business in order to polish.
Yeah, I have, thank you.
Good morning. We've, we've gotten in at this location. This was held over approximately sixty days to give the property owner time to begin rehabilitation in that property owner house. At this point, the, the exterior of the structure is secure, and then moving towards now plans to renovate so that they can occupy the structure again. So I do recommend the table is permanently, because the structure is not secure.
Thanks.
Resolutions held over zero-eight, three-fourty, approved by the Jersey Board of Supervision Company for John D. Compaugh, he's a lead contractor. Zero-eight, three-fourty-one, approved by the Jersey Board of Supervision, Stevens Ford, four-six, four explores, explores. Zero-eight, three-fourty-two, approved by the Jersey Board of Supervision, Stevens Lincoln, for three-four explores. Zero-eight, three, four-three, approved by the Jersey Board of Supervision, Stevens Ford, four-two, four explores. Twenty-one, three-fourty-four, authorized contract with Jay Payne on renovation for the career repair at the Mobile City Center. Consent for resolutions being introduced, sixty-three, four-seven, approved award special votes to the industry of services employee of the month. CFP resolutions being introduced, twenty-one, three-four-eight, authorized contract with C. Thornton for twenty, twenty-two, CFP sidewalks, District Four, District Five. Six hundred and twenty-one, three hundred and twenty-seven, dollars and fifty cents.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I've got one question on, on this one. Could we add, I'm off to this, at that point, or is that already a done deal? Already been bid.
It's, it's already been bid. You're, you're, what's before you is... What's before y'all is the full, full contract that's, that approved, contracts, the, uh, insurance forms, the bonds, whole, whole thing.
Okay. I'll, I'll get your thing.
Resolutions being introduced, zero-one, three-fourty-nine, authorized grant for Jenny Brown, provided for reporting services, London Council week. Zero-one, three-fifty-eight, authorized medical repair for fifty-seven, for July fourth, five months, twenty-fourty-five thousand.
That is the first time I've been on council, this came up in April.
Zero-one, three-fifty-one, authorized inter-agency, three weeks, with the Department of Human Resources, for one of the some of you, just for this, for one of eighty thousand, in the first community city.
Yeah, one, one thing, there was a, a joke that was just thrown at the table about their amount. And, um, you know, since I've been on council, you know, on thick council, I've always huddled about fireworks, but not since about the fourth of July. But Sean, these fireworks this year, are they expected to be as big, as tall, you know, that's the reason why.
Same as last year.
Same as last year.
Yep.
That's the reason why, that would have been more expensive. Thank you. Question about, three-fifty-one. There's another program, I don't know if you've used it, comes from, uh, Sydney Rain's Department.
Yeah. Swap-dee.
Yes, yes, so we're, we're using it?
Absolutely.
Well, mentioned, so that that program, that's completely closed off for all of yous, or we're having fill up all the spots for.
Currently, we do have spots available, so if you do have young people that are still interested, we will interview them.
You got like, like a PDL that was probably put on news letter, in this case, like I had an interview, and I got a straight word.
We can resend it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You will.
Ms. Bell, um, here in the same, um, can they, do they stick on to the website, or how do they, will they be able to apply?
The application is, is currently closed, but we can reopen it and, and send a new traffic to you.
Okay, huh, thank you.
Thanks.
Zero-eight, three-fifty-two, approved by the Jersey Board of Supervision, for, um, three sports at one fifty truck, for their department, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one thirty-nine dollars. Twenty-one, three-fifty-three, authorized contract with the Southeast Consortium, technical services, seeking for Baltimore Street and, street and drainage rehabilitation, forty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Twenty-one, three-fifty-four, authorized contract with the Beltsy Parks and Maritime for preventative maintenance and repairs at the Mobile Alabama Food Terminal, twenty-four thousand, forty dollars. Twenty-one, three-fifty-five, authorized contract with Southeast Consortium, for fire sheets for support of annual conference logistics, twenty thousand. Twenty-one, three-fifty-six, authorized contract with Best Price Services for ride away moving services, Government Street, Airport Boulevard, and Dollar Street. Twenty-one, three-fifty-seven, authorized contract with the public complete services for ride away moving, Ocean Road, Hill Crest Road, County Road.
Uh, Mr. President. I spoke to Mr. Black, right, they got this, but I'd like to see the maps on these, both of these. I've already sent it to you. Oh, you did, okay, fantastic.
Twenty-five, three-fifty-eight, authorized lease agreement with, uh, three, two, please, approximately eight thousand, three hundred seventy-eight square feet, space, wired funding through ARP. Sixty, three-fifty-nine.
You leave it where information, all of this.
So that's, um, that is space that we're leasing out with the Technology Center for the shot detection program, the ARP, reducing gun violence program.
I've got one question. All these new initiatives that are being financed through ARP, one-time funding, which is worth the sustain, the sustainability portion of this program?
So the employees are all contracts, if y'all remember, so we, we actually contracted that because it was, uh, we're gonna sunset with the ARP funds. So is the lease agreement. If the program is effective, then we would have to sustain that through the city budget process.
So you're saying that it's possible that the program may just down the line after five point four million dollars of investment into it?
No, I'm saying we're piloting the program. It has been proven successful in other jurisdictions. And so we will evaluate the effectiveness of the program of whether or not the funds that are needed to sustain the program are necessary versus other programs that we may choose. But there's no reason to continue funding a program that's ineffective.
So possible we may have spent five point four million dollars just to try and...
It's possible that that could happen. It's possible it could be hugely effective. I mean, we're, again, we're piloting this program, be the first one of this type in the city of Mobile.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah, if we come back up to the, uh, loan services, I know you're gonna provide a map to, uh, to them. I'd just like to see, in District Seven, which are voted by parks and rec, and which are voted by, with the, uh, uh, just so I don't know which right ways, which areas are voted by who.
So we don't do any right of ways. So all the...
You don't do parks, right?
Yes.
I'll, I'll shoot you the map, so I'll, I'll send them to everyone.
Yes, yeah, supposed to city doing some, or property doing some, just a moment. And then also, on these contracts, are we making it clear to them that they are responsible for picking up litter prior to moving?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
It's in there. It's in the scope of work.
Yes, and we just wanna make sure that they actually do it.
Sixty-three, five-nine, authorized settlement, three, top of other trains. Forty-one, three-sixty-one, top of public train, two, six, local, public, police, and the second, first, top of the dance service, scheduled twenty-ten. Forty-one, three-sixty-two, top of public trains, result property located at six-two, eighty-eight, one-hundred, one-sixteen, Hill Crest Road, from R-one and L-two to B-two, scheduled lane twenty-four. Forty-one, three-sixty-three, top of public trains, for extension, the vacation of a portion of Magnolia Street, between Adams and Lexington Street, scheduled lane thirty-first. Forty-one, three-fifty-four, top of public trains, to consider a, the vacation of a portion of Magnolia Street, to the Adams and Lexington Street, scheduled lane forty-first.
Anything for the council?
Yeah, um, Saturday was an awesome event, uh, Sean, I think, had the three, four hundred kids out there. Of course, it was the wind kept on, but it was...
Did you get on?
No, the wind kept on, by the time we got stood up for all the kids actually, you know, night was falling, so, I didn't get a chance to stick around, you know, I've, I've got people out of the country, I know, so it was only being my youngest daughters, so. But just to see the kids in the neighborhood enjoy it, and then to know that certain kids from the neighborhood actually got a chance to come out. But we also had kids from all of the city that took, took part, it was a great event. Again, it was unfortunate that the wind had died enough for the balloon to go up, but back to the future, it's hard again, so, great event.
Mr. Penn.
Also, we had a great event, um, at Fergus Park, the three-on-three basketball tournament, I want to thank the administration, Chief Waters, and, um, Mobile Police Department, the Fire Department, everybody, um, parks and recs just worked together to make this event, um, a great success. We had kids from all over the community, we had a group of kids that never even been to Tombville, but they came out, they had to play basketball, and they actually won the tournament, in the middle school tournament. And so that was a amazing opportunity, and I look forward to working with, um, the parks and recs administration as well to do more great events like this in our community. So thank you so much.
Administration?
Yes, sir.
Sargent.
Uh, this is for executive session, uh, economic development, uh...
Yes, that's correct. Pursuant to Alabama Code Section thirty-six, twenty, twenty-five, eight-dash-seven, um, certifying there's an issue that's appropriate for executive session to discuss a matter of economic development, in terms of which discussing in the meeting would not be appropriate as the attorney representing the city on economic development matters, I certify.
How long do you need?
Thirty minutes. There'll be no formal action taken.
And would, would we have to, just in break?
You wanna excuse everybody?
Good thing.
No.
I'm sorry? Sean, I've been trying not to comment back here.